When they go in there, they kind of like, there's really a cost.
It's quite weird though, right?
For riding on locations.
You've got to do it. Been a bunch of problems that we kept having. Up here, so yeah.
Check that place.
And so I'm like, that means it says, well, maybe I'll miss some time I pulled off.
We just guess that's, that's.
That's.
Smell.
Yeah, so we took one there that guy was.
Yeah.
I can't remember whatever.
All right, I will call the Dome Township Planning Commission meeting for September twenty-sixth to order. Let's go through the rule among. Dave, I am here. Jesse?
Here.
Todd?
There.
Lee?
Here.
John?
Eric?
Casey?
Here.
And Kevin?
Here.
Next up, we have the agenda. Anything to add, anything on this? Okay.
Any questions to propose to agenda? Support that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Forward. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the August twenty-nine, twenty-three meeting minutes and resolution SU twenty-three dash twelve-six. Now, it's the resolution SU twenty-three dash twelve-four. Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Forward. And next up, we have public comment. We do have some items for public hearing tonight. If you are here for those, you're going to get your opportunity to speak on those. This is just a general public comment session. Anyone that would like to speak has three minutes to do so. I'll open that up at six oh-two. Any interest? Talk about the Lions, uh, anything? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment at six oh-two. All right, next up, we are, we have two items for public hearing. Uh, first is the ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eleven for accessory dwelling units, flag lots, and minimum dwelling requirements. We'll open that up at six oh-three. Anyone have any comments?
What exactly it's about?
Even, we have a number of things and we kind of grouped them all together here. Um, we had an issue with the flags, a flag lot. We had a number of them come before the planning commission or the zoning board of appeals, so then we backtracked to make it so we had some common language in there to define what it was and then give some definition to some of the other things and then just again reaffirm and have discussion on that. So that's, that's part of that. Um, accessory dwelling units, we had some pretty open conversation about people if they wanted to on their property be able to have additional homes built on their property, not to exceed the size of the existing home out there. So it's a way to give people the ability to have a mother-in-law type, uh, unit put on there.
So this wasn't somebody putting up a doghouse, they can't put up a doghouse or chicken coop or, or?
No, this is, it's more, we kind of tied two things together than, um, the number of dwelling units as well as accessory units. We kind of set a limit to where you could have up to, was it three? Of your combination of, of any of those, whether you have four.
Say four?
We can have four, so that's.
Buildings.
Yeah, for accessory.
But if you have an accessory dwelling unit, it counts against those.
Yeah.
So you can have.
So it's still the two hundred square feet and over, is that counted as an accessory unit? And anything under two hundred square feet, it's not counted?
It's not counted towards the number, the total number allowed. So if you had an accessory dwelling, if you had an accessory building at a hundred and ninety square feet, it would not count towards the, the four maximum number, but it would count towards the maximum cumulative area of all accessory buildings.
So then you would be counting doghouses and chicken coops and, um, uh, little sheds and things like that toward the total.
If they're over.
That's supposed to, we needed to.
And we. It's a.
Because my understanding is that those are counted as movable units.
Yeah.
If they're small.
Small enough to be considered incidental and movable.
Then we would. That was, that was the two hundred square foot thing is, is, is everybody's taking that to mean if it's under two hundred square foot, it's movable and thus not counted as a part of the square foot.
Yeah, but in ordinance, it counts against the, uh, it counts against the area allowed, but it doesn't count towards the number allowed.
Oh, can you show that to me somewhere? Cause I didn't see that. I didn't see that in the, in the. I, one square foot and anything under two hundred square foot and it's not counted. It's under zoning thing. Sorry.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
I didn't mean to mess up.
Oh, no, it's all right. Yeah, here it says, it only says, uh, accessory building and two hundred less, but not be included in the maximum number of accessory buildings. That's the maximum gross floor area of an accessory building, the maximum number of accessory building.
Yeah, you might want to clarify that a little bit better.
Okay.
The, cause it basically, cause it basically looks like anything under two hundred square feet just isn't going to be included at all. It's just going to be, um, you know, not there.
Yeah. Generally, like a chicken coop or a.
Yeah, doghouse or.
Something, something that's not intended to be placed there permanently.
Yeah.
It's not really.
And I have a couple.
Compared to me, it's not my per view, but if you have a, you know, a hundred and fifty square foot shed that's there permanently, then you would need a permit for it. It would count towards the number, but it does count towards the total area. It's more permanent, stronger, I see.
Yes. Well, that's a movable shed, right? There's lots of things, I mean, there's lots of things that can be movable if they're swollen up to move.
I only say that because when I built my shed, I was pulling two hundred square foot was the max, so I made it a hundred and ninety-six. And then I bolted it to a slab of concrete so that I could pick it up most.
Yeah, and that line, two hundred, is where you begin to need a building permit for anything larger than two hundred.
All right, any other comments? All right, at six oh-eight, close the public comment sections. Open it up to board comments. Has. If there's, if there's anything noticed in there that looks any different from what our conversation or what our change of word.
I don't think so. With the ADU, Steve, there's, we, we went with no max, no minimum square footage, right?
Correct.
I believe. Yeah, I'm with the building code requires, what state I should say. And then on the, uh, and page two, single ADU, so like a gross floor area exceeds at the single valley. I guess that could be interpreted a couple of different ways to me, as far as footprint or floor area combined between different levels.
Now, so the gross floor area is all levels.
Right.
Not defined in ordinance.
Yeah. I think that's why I just. There's no definition of gross floor area. I guess. But that makes sense.
Yeah. Yes. That's all right. Any other comments or anyone have any? Would like to make a motion or? I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash eleven, accessory dwelling units, flag lots, and minimum dwelling requirements. Forward. Big roll call on this. Dave? Yes, Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Forward. All right, next up, we have the public hearing, SU twenty-three dash oh-seven and SPR twenty-three dash thirteen at eight thirty-five East Barrow for special events venue. We have the person bringing those forward. I will open up, would you, I'll tell you, why don't we do this first before I open up the public hearing? If you'd like to give us a kind of an overview of rundown of what we're looking at here.
Kevin Ferguson, eight thirty-five East Barrow. What we're trying to do is, um, I'm basically fourth generation on this property. My great grandfather planted a bunch of pine trees back in the day. They've grown to pretty good size. It looks really pretty back there. And it's good, I think, setting for a wedding venue to share with people rather than just having it tucked away in the woods for nobody to see. So we're trying to do a small wedding venue just to have people come in. The seating will be there prepared for them. Oh, it's permanent benching, um, for a capacity of two hundred. They can just come in and like three, three hours of winter of time or something for the ceremony. Have a ceremony and then leave. Couple of different things that were brought up with, one of the neighbors was dust. With the driveway being so close, I do have a, a way to mitigate that with the irrigation. I've got a circuit already over there, but I use the water, the trees that I planted right on the property line. And we did discuss that. I told her that it was supposed to, I'll go ahead and put sprinklers along the whole driveway to take care of any dust. Um, she also had mentioned something about privacy and wanting to keep their space kind of private. But within the standard, the fact is that when I planted the green giant arborvitae's that grow up, I did a little more research on that. It could be a forty to fifty, but with the spacing I planted, they should only get like twenty to thirty. So there shouldn't be a natural screening buffer there. In time for them to grow. They're supposed to go to a height of three, three to five seasons after the third year is what I prescribed. And some of them, like the front two thirds are already five foot yay high. For next year, we could have three foot of growthage. That whole privacy issue taken care of for most. Um, so I can easily take care of the dust. That's not an issue. I think the privacy, given a little bit of time, that'll take care of what the growth creates. Um, see on the site plan, kind of the layout, I don't know if everybody got a chance to pull in and check it out. With adequate parking for seventy-two car at current state. I could definitely take a couple more trees down to open it up to a hundred if, if being necessary. Um, I know we talked about yeah, typical church parking scenario. They, they ask for one space per four people. So that would only put me at fifty, so we're starting at seventy-two with room to grow if you guys. Other thing we kind of encountered was if this is going commercial, I'm going to have to go and get a commercial actually put in from, for the road. Going to require me to open it up wider for a, a certain approach. So I'm trying to avoid zoning the commercial if at all possible. Just because this, the intent of this is to get somebody to achieve alternative than a, a higher cost revenue like the folks on McMillan are doing. This is going to be a low dollar thing and, and the more I have to spend to do it, that's going to make that price. It's pulling off, so. Um, that was one major thing. I mean, that'll, that'll change things a little bit for me if we can't stay around that. One thing I, I know I failed to put into the site plan was, uh, stormwater runoff. Water blading, the spring drain. Uh, so currently our ditches don't drain anywhere. We're just holding some. That's when it goes into the top fields, but because of that, I did take some swales along the back of our privacy fence and the west side, which is in between the fence and that driveway. So that water can't drain into those, the whole of there versus all of the property. The parking area will be rated to the north, so when all that water can shed that way. But I planned to hydro seed it and get some water on the, on the, as well, get a good grass base in there for parks. Which I understand could be, would be an issue if I had to go commercial as well, but probably we have, have to be a gravel based parking area or something of that effect. Really just trying to keep this as simple as possible.
What are you doing for sanitation? What are you doing for toilets?
Being that the, the, uh, ceremony itself produces twenty, gets everything as well, I'm not planning to do anything, but if it's being necessary, we can put a portage out there. It was.
For you. So you were just having the ceremony there, you weren't having a reception?
Right, absolutely. And there's no, absolutely no interest in doing receptions or anything like that. So it's not a party spot. It's just come in, get married, leave.
Right.
And I, one more thing, the, uh, the road commission also pointed out a concern about two-way traffic on the driveway. So they were concerned with width. My comment on that would be everybody's coming in at the same time and then when it's done, I'll leave at the same time. So I don't really see that as being an interference, but I don't professionally think.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Now, it's six eighteen. We'll open up the public comment section of this. So like to make a statement or we have a comment on it, you have three minutes and you can stand up and just state your name and your address if you would, so Steve can get that recorded. We'll go ahead and open that up. Anyone that would like to make a comment or ask comment? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment at six eighteen. If we have any questions we may reference at this point, we'll kind of give you an opportunity if anyone does have that, so, um, any board discussion on this?
So my main concern is in, in the special events venue, it says the minimum parcel size has to be five acres. What's the issue with this being two parcels? Because one parcel's not five acres, so really it can't have any special event venue on it at all because it's not big enough according to the ordinance. And then number nine says that the special events venue shall be located on a property which contains the principal residence. It looks to me like they live on the smaller parcel and that the larger parcel is being used for the venue, which means they don't actually live on the parcel with it. So are these logistical challenges that can, is there a way to combine the property into one parcel?
It would require that it be combined.
Well, I just don't see how it fits the ordinance if we don't require it to be combined.
I think we would have to.
It is kind of weird because the parking area is not the front parcel. And the actual.
I was just going to ask you where the property line's not indicated on here, so I was going to ask you what part of this, so is the whole pro, parking area on the front parcel? Okay. All right. I didn't either until I read it, what's required.
I can ask for waivers for that? That's called?
I think. I'm not sure. As part of specific standards. I know for like parking and signage or anything like that, you can ask for waivers as part of the special land use.
Feelings on that?
That was, that was.
I, I don't see how we can, it doesn't say anything about the planning commission letting us not follow what's in the ordinance, so I just, I think they have to combine it unless Stephen does other research. It doesn't seem that we can say, oh, it doesn't really matter.
It's part of the. Yeah, but it's, but that's what it says and we should just do it, cause I don't think.
Yeah.
It's not going to affect anything, right? I mean. It's only part. So it's just taken out the board?
I, I having, I do think that there's going to be a need to require some sort of sanitation because if you think about how long it takes to get there and then who, maybe people drove from a far distance and all I know is the campground, like the second people wa, even if they're from like Dome Township, the first thing to ask is where our bathroom is. So I feel like we probably should go ahead and require some sort of a portage on or something to, just to. Otherwise, I don't know. Otherwise, I just feel like it might cause more traffic as people have to leave. They get there, they realize there's not a portage on, they leave to go and then, then you do have that two-way traffic done already.
And then where are they going to go to the bathroom?
To Jesse's.
Yes, we have, this is like, we're at the point now, we, that's all right. If you do, if you do have a comment, you can direct it and at that point we can, we can see if there's.
No, my only other concern was the, the driveway. I, my first thought was, you know, you've got these people coming in to the, let's say you do have some sort of medical emergency. What are you supposed to do with the cars that are in line to park while you're trying to get an ambulance up there if it's not? If you can't have two vehicles pass, then what are they all supposed to do to get out of the way? Will we back up or? Or, or when you get through and the ambulance is trying to leave and there's tons of traffic, I just, I think the driveway needs to be in mind that two, two vehicles could pass and one of them may be a large emergency type vehicle. Whenever you get that many people together, especially if it's hot or something, you never really know what, what you might need.
That way, I, I parked my big forty-eight, forty-five hybrid in the driveway and held around just by.
Okay.
But there's like four foot on one side and then.
So it's.
Big foot on the other side.
Weird and passable.
It's clear, it's just not, it doesn't have stone, but it's passable. Okay, good. Thank you.
The county, the county requires something similar for private roads, like where they say you need to have a twenty-foot wide improved surface, but thirty-foot wide needs to be cleared and passable.
Right.
Um, for that type of situation, I guess, where even though it's not, it's, it's.
So that would be, right, east, the east is the, would be the passable portion of that.
Whole side, like four foot to the previous.
Any other comments?
Any other. That's, did you read the letter from the neighbor?
Yeah, that's, um, some of that was brought up with. There's trees currently there right now.
I want us to driveway, like back to.
It's, it's like three hundred and eighty-six feet over towards to go into our parking area.
One.
Yeah.
The arborvitae's are planted right now already?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any conversation with the neighbor about the letter? Like, are the trees not enough? She mentions a privacy fence in here or?
What did you?
She must know the trees are.
I have, she's concerned about, I actually thought I actually was on bushes and stuff, trees, but they're all trees.
Don't.
They're, she's concerned about the growth rate because they haven't shot right up and
Yep.
given us immediate privacy, which, yeah, I mean, it's a little disappointing with its nature and I can't, I can fertilize and water and that's a benefit, but uh, the ones at the back portion of the driveway, they're, they're small. Cause they're eight of initially, oh, and they're supposed to be irresistible, but that's. And then you weren't, we weren't getting any sun to the back portion until I cut all the trees down for parking. So now that that's getting a good floor out of the sun, they should. Yeah, I, I forward after the privacy again. I get where she's coming from. I just think that given time, it will be a very ideal situation.
Steve, the property, like combining the properties, is that, is that done to here or is that the county? The county and software combined, that's, and that's sold out. Not that expensive, is it? No, it's free.
That's a good phrase.
Only, it's free from the government. Only this was free.
I, I don't know, make, for myself, I guess. I like the idea. I mean, I think it's simple and basic. Yes, I would say I have a couple of portages there, probably two. Which, keep in mind, you gotta get the whole ADA thing, so I would have one that's for handicap or a handicap accessible, I should say. Definitely handicap accessible, maybe one standard one. Shouldn't add a huge cost.
Um, and to get someone in there in a wedding dress.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the irrigation to take care of the dust would work fine. I mean, something you could just simply just turn on, wind it round down a little bit, run it then.
Yeah, we put like calcium chloride down or something, but she's concerned about the well.
Right, and that stuff's expensive though and whatnot. I mean, I think the irrigation idea would work great. I mean, because you're, you're only going to need it once a week, turn it on for thirty minutes and there's no dust. I don't see any reason to commercial zone it myself. Uh, I don't think we would want to do that at all because it's open.
Where did that come from? If they're already a permitted use by special use, why would we ever consider rezoning anything?
I'm not sure. It would have been back when it wasn't. It was barns only.
Oh, okay.
That would have been the only way to do it.
Yeah.
Cause I don't see any reason to rezonate.
No. Kevin, do you intend to have a hour out there for Mr. Microphone? No?
I, if, if needed, I could get like a Bluetooth wireless thing. Now, that's all that stuff is. Currently available now, Bluetooth speaker and microphone, but don't intend to, no.
At eight times.
That's all.
Yeah.
Eight times.
Time, was it till eight?
Eight, yeah. So I guess, so the last thing is, I mean, I, I think the idea is great. Um, the only thing I'm hung up on just a little bit is the trees for the buffer, which I think will work. Um, this letter from the neighbor, you know, she seems real nice and seems that she wants to work with you on it. Said you guys are great neighbors and everything, but she's concerned about this six foot privacy fence. This letter from the neighbor, you know, she seems real nice and seems that she wants to work with you on it, said you guys are great neighbors and everything, but she's concerned about this six-foot privacy fence. Do you think she would, uh, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud here, you know, what about, uh, maybe like just doing a hundred-foot long of that privacy fence? Not right at the road and not at the back here. Road, you know, a hundred, a hundred fifty-foot length that like borders her yard, for example.
Wait, from her? From her house?
Yeah, but at this point.
Back to.
Example, like I'm saying, well, what if, what if you put a privacy fence from here to here?
Yeah, gotcha.
Would that appease her, where she says, okay, yeah, I'm happy, but it's not the whole thing for you, it's only, it's only half, half of this.
Okay.
Because it seems like with most of this, any of this kind of special use and whatnot, right? If you keep the neighbors happy, that's a piece of cake, nobody from a mile away complains about it, right? I've learned that the hard way sometimes, but.
And I might, that's all key to it, you know, is, is.
I think acknowledging, addressing it.
Rest of the.
But it's simple, it'll be affordable, it's. It's basic, it's not gonna be a huge traffic problem.
You know, if you wanna bring, I think it's an out to the world, you know, let them have a wedding there, that, that's kind of what we are, we are. We're in the woods, you know, we are. There's a lot of reasons people wanna have that kind of stuff now, the venue, the separate venue and wedding is, is kind of an in thing. So I think it's, it's not something, it's not a nuisance, you still have it there, it's not an intrusion, it's not additional noise, it's not. It's a pretty simple thing.
I would have a fence, is they have a custom fence that they made that has old barn steel on it with. Three stained four-by-fours and two-by-fours and things and caps. They put up like a four-foot section of it already.
Oh, your neighbor did?
Yeah, so there's probably been one we've matched that exact design. That might get kind of costly.
Yeah, it's what again, it's, it's.
Like four-by-fours with black metal roofing or siding in it. I mean, it looks pretty cool, it's modern, but it's not a cheap four-by-eights on your panel.
Right, yeah, that's, I was thinking, that's privacy fence to me. It's just whatever.
That would be a risk number if I had to.
Right. Right.
And two options, you could say, I can do this fence, show a picture of the one you're looking to get, or we can give the bushes an opportunity to do with their thing, and if not, we can see how it goes. They, I mean, at any point if you're willing to do that, I mean, that's, I think that's fair. Need a board discussion, depending on that, do you want?
How do we wanna do that, Steve? Oh.
I have a question.
Yes.
If we were to combine the two parcels, is it possible that if we were to get sued, that it will affect our house? Or our actual real property now that it's not separate?
Anytime you combine anything, you have more risk of that, yes, anytime it's separate, you're gonna have less risk, yep.
Although I have a feeling, since you're the operator, they still.
Right.
Come after you personally, even if they're two separate parcels.
Yeah, my insurance guy said that you start an LLC with your sounds ass and officially insured to cover anybody coming after you in personal effects, so.
Correct.
That's easily.
Yes, it's easily mitigated, yes, but.
There's an insurance requirement in the.
Yeah, and you have to name the township, the sheriff's department, and the road commission as additional insurance.
Yes, but we'll also add that as a condition, that it be furnished upon part of the use.
We are not exactly, we would give legal advice on, on any of that, but it's, there's certainly things when you tie businesses into personal property. I think that there are ways to mitigate it, and just give yourself that protection possible, so.
To make the motion, should we put all the conditions in the motion that's talked about? Okay. Does anybody else have anything to say before I just?
I think Scott here had a question.
Oh.
My only question is that some locales, a neighbor pays for half of the fats. So I was wondering if maybe if your neighbor wanted a really, really, really fancy fats, whether they'd be willing to put up half of the money.
That's, that's what, I appreciate that.
That would be beyond our purview, I think, but that would be a good thing to offer. I think certainly if you were to do your side of it and what you would like, you could say however maybe we do something where. Bested interest between both parties, or let the bushes become their thing, or however you guys would like to move that becomes. It's not a requirement we would have on there unless we were going to state we want a privacy fence, that, I think, is that kind of what we led to?
I think we should right by the house, like Jesse said, I think just right there.
Either legal requirement for us would be, whatever you put up there, it just needs to be, meet the standards.
Would be privacy fence dark, distance from.
There's no, there's no measurements on anything here, so I think no.
Yeah, so front corner, I look at. The same picture. As a driveway came in, there's one picture behind it. I was looking at this one there, like where that, kind of where that, so, yeah, yeah, I was thinking like maybe from right there.
They're talking about the crook in the, right there.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Back here, I don't know, there's not measurements, but that's what I would have in mind, I guess. I'm guessing that that might be, well, Kevin said it worked.
From like. End of her backyard version.
I think Jesse's saying from right here where you got this creek in the driveway, so kind of where they parked their car down to, how far back did you go?
That's from the.
Like, cause this is their backyard, so like back to the shed is.
Seemed like they'd be more concerned with that area than people that are, probably, well, that, they're bigger, they're very bigger here, they're like five feet, same here, so.
Kevin, here's what.
Yeah, but what about from right, like right here to right here?
I think it's something like this, that's what I have. Maybe from here to right here, that kind of encompasses the house, their back deck, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Where I would see that as reasonable, I guess, it's just driveway.
Right.
It's a section.
And back there is the shed, just go.
Okay.
So I think it would look funny if like.
Yeah, that's not the best way to describe that.
Get a section, there's on the end there.
What is their shielding, like the side of their house, is that, is it right in line with the side of their house or?
Like patio area.
Okay, so it's shielding their patio area, okay. What about the window, do they have windows on the side of their house or is this their garage? Okay.
Aesthetics, they probably, they're pants. Probably equal to a hundred feet.
They have existing.
No, but it sees drivers, the driver.
I got you, I got you.
So I was thinking about just measurement from here to here, so.
Two hundred and ten foot.
But it might be where there's already, it doesn't show the existing fence on there.
Right.
So it's, I think, that is set was twelve foot. What they put up their back?
They said Kevin, twelve feet about what they have set up right now. Just to, yeah, it's gonna take a measure.
It's about a hundred feet. Thirty times.
We are, I'm, I'm, I, it's a fence on my side.
Especially would need to be on your side of the property.
On your property, that's gonna be putting my bushes down there, yeah. All my trees that I planted, it would.
Okay, so the trees would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The trees are right on the property line.
What was you doing for it?
In, in my experience, we use our urbanways at the campground too for privacy. And even over fifteen years, we've been pretty disappointed, and they seem to reach a point where they're probably growing like a centimeter a year. We've tried a new variety now and they grow, they grow a lot faster, but they're not as tight and thick as the green giants are. So although they're getting big and bushy, they don't provide nearly as much privacy either because they're kind of, you can see through it more, so. I, I, I really feel like in order to keep neighbor, neighborly relations, a fence, uh, the way to go, right? In the most sensitive areas of their house, otherwise I think they're gonna be really disappointed. And I hate to have you and your neighbor sour of friendship. Yeah, it's hard to live by somebody when you start to not like each other. If there was already a very well-established hedge there, it might work out better than something that you're asking them to be patient about it. People's patience seems to wear thin, way faster than you would expect.
I have not seen it, no.
Because the front portions are, are almost five feet tall. And it's pretty full, suppose where you can step the top, that'll make it thicker.
And spacing is in between them right now. Four foot from edge tree to edge tree. Right, but I mean, so I mean, the branches, they're all biggest spaces.
Already. Acts like I didn't really understand. But really, I think they're all flipped or something.
Well, if we, would you prefer that we table it, so you can provide measurements and?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm trying, I'm trying to get it done, but if you were to table us, we can go look at it and then say, okay, yeah.
Right. I mean, it's not really wedding, they would rather put it off a month and give us some pictures and some, so we can narrow it way down, what?
You table it till next month?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I was trying to come up with solutions to get it done.
Right, but then I don't wanna put a bunch of conditions we don't need, right?
They only need sixty-foot of fence, I mean, I don't know. I would rather do that.
Okay.
So we're taping the same kind of view so that we'll see the. Screening, and then the special use, I guess, needs to be tabled as well until the parcels are combined, correct?
Yes.
I make most of the table SU twenty-three dash zero seven and SPR twenty-three dash thirteen or. What do we do? Alright, I'll take your roof, oh, well. Hey, yes, Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
And? And you go. Alright, we'll table that till next month and hopefully that time we get a chance, get out there with those measurements and then get the combo and be good there. Alright. Next up, we have communications, a couple things in there from the Board Meeting Minutes and MSU Extension email. No finished business. Right, you're up to new business and you have someone here from Christian Gagri?
Yep.
Okay, would you like to step forward? Alright, usually again, this is a little bit different than what we just went through there, this is your opportunity to kind of tell us what you're looking for. We're gonna give you that opportunity.
Sam Gagri, um, I bought five, five by eight at lot six. Industrial Park, lot five, looking to put up a building of six by one twenty with an office on the front there. Basically, we're using it for storage. To put maintenance trucks. You guys got the permit? Phase one, bring in one building and phase two, build your own road, go put the other attached buildings, so it'll actually be one twenty by one twenty. Um, in the back, I'm gonna use some bays just for, um, you know, dirt, sand, and in the winter time, restore soil. Had a fence going around, yeah, driveway out front eventually, but I can flirt it out there. Yeah, for that, I mean.
Sam, what's, tell us about your business, residential, commercial?
I do a tad bit of commercial, um, like for instance, Dog Star Ranch, I was there for two and a half years. I remodeled that whole facility. Carol and Pat, they sold another house, I'm like on a road.
Foundations, slabs, driveway sidewalks.
Carol contractors, we build houses, do.
Okay.
Built on barrel length, it's here, uh, the.
Okay.
Turnout, rebuild.
Alright, good to know.
Love pool bars.
Yeah.
Houses, I try to do one or two.
Yeah, took a ride by there today, I don't blame you for wanting to get your equipment indoors.
Yeah. Here right now, we, I mean, pushing the limits over there, but finally got this set up, so we can start moving. Eager force path, pretty.
Got the nice dome night portions out there and it looks good?
Yeah, probably, yeah, just getting a base down to get started, you know, if you get started, trying to get in there is gonna be a pain. No, I'm excited, I mean, never thought, how does that be, putting up a building, thirty-seven this year. They just keep falling into place and. But I know that building, I mean, I'd say I'd love to get it up in a year. Initially, I'm hoping to get the structure up, the roof on, and then work on the walls, Bill.
Alright, if you wanna go and have a seat, we're gonna kind of have some conversation here amongst the board.
More than coal for a commercial building?
Oh, yeah. Definitely, then, I know with fire suppression, coat and all that stuff, I built a couple of commercial buildings and. I made sure my square footage was correct, so I didn't have to fire suppression. And then even in phase two, I'll have to put a wall up in the middle of the building, that's, it's not like.
Yeah, there's provisions for lighting, you know, that's what, yeah. Groundwater runoff, all that, parking.
What's the height of this building? Can somebody translate what this says?
I think it should be thirty-one.
It says, it says one, one thirty-three.
I've seen thirty-three foot four inches, is what I've seen.
It's a what?
Thirty-three foot four inches, I think that.
Oh, it's a parentheses, I'm like, it's a hundred and thirty-three, so. Okay, yes, thirty three. Okay, perfect, thank you.
One five on one side. Help trust this fix.
Yeah, but the starting elevation starts at a hundred and thirty or whatever. I'm not sure. Oh, like the reason.
Okay, so it's, it's eight feet, it's twenty one feet and it's thirty three feet. Okay.
I think you got the right site.
That lot's pretty open right now, there's some trees right inside.
Still private couple. I cleared the other lot next to me, tape room. I actually run you like storage units. I opened up another company. Hopefully that should drop back to that.
Do there are comments or concerns?
High storage space, how close can I get that to the property?
It's, might be a bit of a rare, but if we were going strict. Strict application.
I'd say.
He's just applied the rear setbacks.
I'd say it's thirty foot right now, but I mean, it's just all wasted space.
Yeah.
I could push it back and then put my fence up to the. I'm sure I have to be somewhat on the property.
It would be just considered an accessory building for accessory structure. Six feet.
Oh. If I do end up changing that, I'll have to.
Um, where are they placed right now?
From the bag, you can say that's about thirty four.
About thirty. I mean, approved. Shouldn't straightly change about the ten feet.
Okay.
To no occasion. But they can also prove it. But now I'm getting.
I would still probably keep it twelve feet away. That was going to build the roof a little bit farther back, just to have the storage on the back. I wouldn't put it sixty. Probably just move maybe ten, twelve feet closer to the property line.
Kind of like your gravel and sand.
Yeah.
Or something.
Yeah. Because it's going to be kind of wasted space in that bag.
Just put like, make too rough.
Yeah, just four walls, make too rough. And then the backside, I'll just build another like four foot with storage racks back there. Piece of attack.
Is there a, some kind of a maintenance agreement or something for the road over there? Because I saw a new sign and it says only these people are allowed and blah, blah, blah.
I know, and I'm wondering why they didn't put one up next road.
Yeah.
I had a talk with what's the name and see if I paid for everyone had paid for that sign.
Right, so is there, is there, is there a maintenance agreement then established? Because I.
They're in the process.
It's been seventy pages long.
They're in the process.
They're starting kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, they, I gave a quote last year for plowing the road.
Yeah.
They got another quote, but I don't know if it's going to take effect this year. So someone who required, you know, all of us who had to pay for that to keep the roads plowed.
Who was putting all that together then, I guess?
There's an association.
Yeah.
The road commission will take the road. They were supposed to take the road, but they won't take it. Because it's 20 years old and they say it's falling apart. So they have, they wanted to remain a private road. Yeah. So now they.
Right now we have association fee and we all, like I thought, I can't remember exactly what it was. Have to pay dues, which they turned the light poles on. So now we've got power. The roads are lit up. Have a nice.
With equipment out there, I would certainly want some lights out there, that's for sure.
That road commission.
But I mean, Dale's tree service, I guess he got broken up day, but that's Dale. None of my stuff's got touched.
He's just on the other side of you.
He's out at our corner. I don't have a fence though.
Was, I didn't even think about, is there anything Steve that prevents us from approving this in regards to the private road, fortunately or not, if that's a private road?
No, it's an existing private road.
Okay.
The only difference is that they wouldn't need any driveway permits from the road.
Okay. So we need to approve the moving of the building or the idea of the, forgive the ability to move it?
Yeah, you could put that in the motion that the. Those storage bins can be placed up to.
Six feet?
Up six feet from property line.
Think that would help accomplish what you're looking for.
Yeah, that's the only thing I've seen that. Down the road, I think it's coming, get some more stuff for a bed and get bigger.
He's your guy.
Right now, this is all I need.
All right, any other questions or? Putting that six foot. Back porch, that's only maybe going to include that. Make a motion? Make a motion, approve SPR 23 dash fourteen. At two, seven, seven, four, nine, road, street, drive. For Christian Concrete. With one alteration to the plan. And the committee has allowed an additional. What, committee has allowed the building to move.
The bins, the storage bins.
Let's say in the right, the storage area. Up to six feet from the exterior, the property line. I don't know how, I didn't word that very well.
Good enough.
Okay. We'll take a little call vote. Dave, yes. Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
And Kevin. All right. All right. Now we move to the parks and recreation plan, which I did a little bit of homework ahead of time. And ask the question, what we have to do with this? And per our plan, we have to review it every five years. So we're at that point. We could add in no properties to, we have to add into it, but two have been sold. So even will be, as we, we just have to have a discussion on it again, if there's anything out there. He mentioned in there, he sent out a survey and I think he said he had 24 responses back now.
As of this morning.
As of this morning, so some have said, how important is it? Couple are not at all. Some are, have certain things in there, we'll certainly be able to review some of those. But does not appear there's any major changes to the plan itself. Just kind of going through that and reviewing. What's going to change the inventory of what parts? There's a couple of properties that are no longer part of it. But again, just, you just got to basically create the document that starts the page eighteen. The end of the fact that eighteen to forty six, will that be pretty much what you're going to be changing or making some cut and paste?
Yeah, so I will be changing the, engine inventory, allow it to reflect what we have now. There have been changes with parts, but if you changes did, it's all apart. Beautiful as well. Old brown field and the Bear Creek natural area will take those out. And there's a comprehensive list of everything the township has. For parks and recreation opportunities as well as what other, other people provide, whether it's private opportunity or semi-public or offer.
Will we incorporate public comments that you received? We have to put those into this also or?
Yes, so the responses to the survey will be also included. I'd also like to include these responses from the survey from the previous plan as well.
Okay.
Just that, for continuity there. For long term questions and needs of township residents.
Who received the survey?
There's been posted on the township website. Okay. And we've got, that can outreach through Facebook primarily to make people aware of that. And it's kind of posted on the township's Facebook page and.
Okay.
Both concerned citizens of Dalton Page and Twin Lake.
There's no need for what we did before with the having a open house and those types of things or giving people.
That I'm aware of.
Okay.
Uh, we just need to have public outreach. So.
Yeah.
The main function of the Parks and Recs plan is to have it available. Or if we have, if we want to apply for, get our grants. They require that we all apply your plan. And you speak, renew or redone every five years. And I was talking to treasurer and she's delighted to apply for grants next year. So this has become more of a. More of an issue that we need to.
Yeah.
To address. If we weren't going to apply for grants, we could just let it last. Oh, the previous Parks and Recreation Plan, it lasts between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen. Or the only, the only reason for this is nobody can apply for grants. You can just like show like that they even have the date. Yeah. So township funds do go into parks. But typically, kind of about forty right a year. And all these park funds. Last, most time of years. Maintenance work.
Cutting grass and?
Yeah, a lot of it's maintenance, which I think is a separate budget. But as far as capital investments goes, usually around forty a year.
And the bike trail now, is down, or we now own the bike trail, is that correct?
Don't own it, but we are responsible for maintaining it.
Is that going to be added into that or we need to include that in here?
Yeah, so it will be included.
Okay. And do we still provide someone to do that service, is that what?
Yes.
Okay.
Maintenance. Get scared of that.
Okay.
Yeah, DJ's playground on this list, the quote, do they, do you know if they're going to reopen?
It's nothing for sale. I'm not exactly sure if they will reopen.
What's that? Need that playground across from you guys?
Oh, 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 oh.
The Bear Creek natural area, how long, how long do we even own it? And this back plan that says this recently acquired, twenty nine eighty?
I think it was acquired in two thousand and ten, probably before.
Okay. It wasn't recently acquired in twenty nineteen.
Not necessarily.
I mean, I don't, that's not my definition of the word recent.
I think that they, so that, I was reading the twenty ten plan. I think they said it was just acquired.
Okay.
So they might have taken that from the twenty ten plan and just carried it over.
I was like, what was the point in buying it and spitting it right back out? But that's.
It's money.
It's, it, it looks like the picture, is that Russell? It's somewhere in the area of Russell?
Yeah, so it's Russell running across in the moment as well.
Oh, okay, all right.
So our plan then would be that at some point you will do the workout and that we will have to have a discussion on it, approve it. And that.
Yes.
Stacy?
So next, next month we'll have the public, public outreach results. The survey. I'll compile all of that. And I'm, the treasurer, cemetery coordinator, the maintenance supervisor. Establish some goals to recommend. We'll provide those recommended goals to the commission and you can put them over if they're. If you want to change them up a little. And then based on the recommendation of those goals, I'll compile the plan. That includes those goals as well as the. The inventory and also a profile of the community with demographics and. Other information that gives a snapshot on Dalton Township.
All right, so tonight our conversation pretty much that we just had basically meets the criteria of what we needed to do then for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Touching base, if there's anything the planning commission. Is already existent plan that they're.
I think now that I know where the parks are, I need to get in the car all these days and take a look myself. I know there's a lot of these things that. I think in the last time when they were first doing this, there was conversation about like a frisbee park. If they go to Frisbee Golf, then you're going to get things along, they had some ideas of specific. It's not really. Yeah, there's some others.
Pushing the dog park, we'll provide the dog club on the ball field.
I think that's been, yeah, kind of. Just had to move forward to say that. I mean, uh, at this point, I think we, it didn't make sense. We have, we have woods all around this, pretty much everywhere is a dog park in Canada.
Yeah, the county park at Twin Lakes is probably our most well-known recreational location.
I have seen it as the most used. It's not the most used. But I believe they have switched to a, an entry.
Yeah.
Yeah, these private facilities, they just have to be right.
It would be nice if they were.
Okay. I don't know what a service center is. I'm going to go to the campground right now and look for our service center.
Is that something we need to contact individual businesses to see if they'd like to present information?
That would be a good idea.
What are you, so there you go, Casey, you can, you can go back and look and see if there's additional things in there and?
All right. I'll just drive right over there and all these places and make sure they, they want it.
At least three of your homes.
Did you have a service center in twenty eighteen?
Oh, I don't even know. And we don't even have that many sites.
It's fine.
It's fine.
Are you, are you on our township? You're, you're not listed on the private.
Yeah, we are. We're at the bottom. That's what we're laughing about right now. On page twenty five.
Got it. I was going to say, not, shouldn't be. Very good. All right, so that rule's passed, I think, got that pretty well taken care of, and then, yeah, we need to, our homework will be, you know, with the special events venue. See how that with the screening and those types of things, get that, get the eyes on that, and should be set, other than that, I think we are ready for. One thing, I was, I was looking through, Steve, looking through this, the general provisions for those private roads, just thinking about that business park over there a little more, you know? And, I know this more pertains to new private roads, right?
Yes.
Um, but in that pretty neat situation there, I'd like to place that there forever, and let's all some, get some attention. But in, on four dash twenty here, it talks about that the township requires the applicants to have private road maintenance agreements in place, and access easement agreement. Blah, 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 a method of initiating and financing of such a road, vertical method of cause. That's something we should require to get in place before we just allow forty buildings in there, and then.
No, it already exists, it already exists, it's, it's a hundred and.
Yeah, it's a whole.
It's a whole, I read it.
Oh, it's, okay, because he doesn't, uh, really know anything about it, and that's.
Well, because it's a whole spread, it's a hundred and eighty pages, I think.
That's.
None of them are rated.
So that is, oh.
It's in existence, yes, it's a condo association with a private road, and in the road, and, yeah, they, they have a method for officers.
Okay, I, I was, I was understanding that was all like new. New.
I guess that's what I thought, I, I was.
No, because when the county established through the industrial park, they set this private road into, they made it a private road. They intended to turn it, to sell lots right away and turn it over to the road commission, but because they didn't sell them in a time, the road commission won't take it, so. It was all, and the whole framework was there before they started selling lots, in the purchase agreement, all the people knew that it was a private road, and they, you could look at the private road documents. Before the parcels were sold, but, yeah, the county attorney.
So the township has, I mean, they have, the township has this agreement, and.
Yes, we have, yeah, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, that's okay. Got it, which we have no responsibility for, it's just exists for that park.
Right.
Okay, right, basically, it just, it just talks about the maintenance agreements, know that there is one, because they just need to present it, if there is a new one, it will have a roadmap to you, so we have, I didn't realize there was one.
Really, two thousand, since that was created?
Yes, it was very long ago.
Yeah, I think this was.
Okay.
This one, I think, two thousand and ten, or two thousand and seven, when it was.
Yeah.
Created, so we wouldn't be able to hold up to that standard, as well.
Right, no, I, I understand that, I was just, because I thought the, I thought the private road thing was like new.
No.
I thought that was new, right, because I thought that was a whole new deal.
No, it's whole, none of them like it either.
And that. And that the maintenance agreement wasn't completed yet, but was in process.
Oh, gotcha.
And I was trying to get in front of that page, so we.
Oh, yeah.
Restrict future buildings until that's done, so it does, that's something that lands in our lap, I guess, is what I was getting at, if it's all done.
Did the road commission make in those roads when it was?
Yes.
So, that, that was a mention.
Yeah, it's the whole thing, it's the whole thing.
That's where I was, that's where I was going.
It's really dirty and underhanded, we, we're still in a public session, strike them from the record, somebody make a motion to a dirt.
Do I have that motion?
I make a motion to a dirt.
So, all those in favor say aye, opposed, all right, we will end, we have seven fourteen.
Actually, seconded by everyone.
Yeah. What's that?
It was seconded by.
By everyone, oh. Some reading.